Before you and this city, as we transact the business of the city, Lord, we pray your presence within this meeting. We ask, Lord, that you bless the mayor and bless the council members. Lord, as we deliberate, pray that we would be fair and we would be sensitive in all our undertakings. We will always give you the praise for our blessings, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag with your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crawford, you can hold a robe, please.
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Mr. Flurry.
Here.
Ms. Litt. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. We have a forum and we can proceed.
Mr. Chair, you know, it occurs to me, I don't know if you've ever worked on a restaurant. In a restaurant, many restaurants, you know, they put all the tips in the pot and then they split them between who were working that night.
I've seen that.
As I look around, I think there may be some opportunities for us, the four of us who happen to be here today.
You got lonely up there.
But I mean, just not the same. I think that, you know, in terms of budgetary allocation for people that are working on this council, I think we needed to...
Our districts need more street work than you.
I mean, I think there's an opportunity to get some things done with only four of us.
Let's make some amendments, huh?
Okay. No, sorry about that. I digress.
Let me also mention, and I failed to mention it previously, administrative conferences, that at today's meeting, there will be no public comments on items that are not on the agenda. If you are here for that purpose, you know, it would be at the privilege of the council if there are public comments. Mr. Broussard, I mean, Mr. Councilman Corbin is going to bring you up as his distinguished guest. Are you a distinguished guest?
I'm...
No, no. But I'm happy if we're moved on to awards and recognition of distinguished guests, that I would recognize Rob Broussard.
Well...
If we've gotten to that point, if we haven't gotten to that point, then I would...
I just need to mention that tomorrow I will be accepting a motion to adopt the minutes of the previous...
You will have one, rest assured.
Thank you. Now, we're at that point, sir.
Okay. I would like to recognize Mr. Broussard on behalf of the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association. He has a few things he would like to mention.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, as mayor. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Bradford for coming to our tutoring program. You know, I think it's been a huge success, as you saw, and we would welcome anybody in our city or our government to come and see how communities are interacting with our school system to help our kids grow and become better citizens. So I want to thank you, okay?
Thank you.
Second, the D and A meeting was held May the 10th. Again, some more thank yous to Mr. Bradford, City Attorney. Thank you for coming. He did an outstanding job, Mayor. I mean, outstanding. The city police were represented. We had an outstanding meeting where government officials, both prosecutors and law enforcement from three levels of government, discussed their jurisdictional responsibilities on addressing corruption. And they literally gave their phone numbers out to anybody that wanted it to, "If you have a problem, call us." And they repeated that over and over and over. So, yeah, there are ways to address situations, and I think that's the proper way by going to law enforcement if you think something's going on that's not correct. Second, I want to thank Mayor Tyler and Shelley Regal, Catherine Kennedy, and all of the SPAR workers for their work in collaboration with us to host that movie in the park we had last Friday night. There was about 400 people there. I think it's recognized all over our city that we are doing whatever we can to pull our city together, both in work and in play. And we had different people provide food and entertainment, and it was a wonderful way to end the last day of school for the kids and also a huge kickoff for kids and their families for our summer activity that's affordable. Thank you, Mayor, for making that possible.
Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you. You did a great job.
The next thing I want to mention is that I kind of got ambushed a couple of weeks ago with the trees and SWEPCO in Broadmoor, and I think a bunch of us did. And I learned some lessons about how things happened to you guys from going through that process. But something that said to me in working with SWEPCO, and I want to ask that someone from the city come and meet with our organization on June the 7th. SWEPCO is going to be there, and as soon as they get through, I really would need to have somebody there to talk to us because it's my understanding that with the infrastructure project that's going to happen in our neighborhood, that there may be more trees that would be addressed. And so I think if we address it in a proactive manner, that just educating the public would help take a lot of those monkeys off our back in those phone calls that we get.
Have you spoken to the Public Service Commission?
Yes, I have. Bill Robertson is actually on our Board of Directors, and when the SWEPCO issue came up, that was the very first person I called. So, and, you know, it was really hard to address the situation because it was a fluid situation happening, and we, and it just happened, and there was nothing at that moment that we could do to slow it down. But I think when the infrastructure situation hits, I don't want to be reactive, I want to be proactive.
Now, did he kind of take a stance that he thought it was their responsibility or the city's responsibility?
Well...
All right. Let me say this. Holding SWEPCO accountable, who did he feel was the response, what governing entity was responsible?
Okay. And I'll answer that directly. He said it with no hesitation, "The Public Service Commission is responsible for holding SWEPCO's feet to the fire and adhering to the rules and regulations that have been established nationally and that they follow in doing that." And, you know, I was told that if you feel like that they're not following the rules, call our office. I sent a lot of people that number online and everywhere else. If you don't think that they're doing what's right, please call the Public Service Commissioners. Now, you know, again, we were acting in a reactionary manner, which I think it would have helped if we could have been proactive and got that information out. So, when the city, when we get to the infrastructure issue, I think that if we deal with that proactively, maybe the residents will understand that, you know, it's some hard decisions that have to be made, you know? Do your infrastructure that's mandated by federal legislation, federal law, or do we save a tree? And, you know, and when you get down to those issues, it's like, now, I think the city's under a federal court order to do it, am I correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we can have some people there for you.
Please.
We can have some people there for you. You know, just let us know. June 7th, let us check our calendars to make sure we're not tied up doing something else.
Okay.
But Mr. Crawford will make sure that the right people are there.
Yeah. And anything I can do to help disseminate that information, y'all, please call me. I'll do whatever I can to work with y'all.
Okay.
Also, again, I want to thank y'all for the efforts that this city council has gone through to work collaboratively with our Neighborhood Association. It does take a bunch of people to make this happen, and I'm beginning more and more to respect the efforts that you guys go through to do. Thank you so much.
Mr. Broussard, let me just mention before you leave how much I appreciate you for inviting me over to the tutoring program and to see those youngsters and to see the quality of teachers as well as the help that they was getting. I never, you know, lifelong resident of Shreveport, but I had never visited AC Steer. And I sold myself short because I should have been there to see that marvelous school. That school is one of the most beautiful schools I've attended, I mean, ever visited. The principal was so kind and gave us a tour and the history of the school was very intriguing and impressive. But I want to come back and say that because of your efforts with the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association, getting the funding to help put that be free program on, I think, was absolutely marvelous. And I want to congratulate you and those that you selected to work with, with those youngsters. How anything negative could come out of that, I would never know. So, thank you, and thank you for coming down, sharing your experiences with the council regarding the great things that are happening in Broadmoor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Everson.
I just wanted to add briefly, you know, some of the concerns about trees and upcoming infrastructure initiatives, both from the city as well as some of the private utilities, came up in a recent South Highlands Neighborhood Association meeting. And I think the discussion was really productive. I mean, it was a helpful one. It sounds like it might be a similar tone as to what you, what y'all talked about there. And I'll be happy to, you know, kind of chat with you, let you know kind of what questions were asked in that forum so that y'all may, you know, be able to make sure that you're prepared with what kind of questions people may have had. Because, you know, I don't think everybody necessarily got the answer they were hoping to get.
Right.
That they got the correct answer, you know? So I think that was, that gave people a lot of peace of mind.
One of the things that this led to is there was a couple of young people who had written some concerns online. I reached out to them. We met with an arborist from Baton Rouge, and I give Marion Marks credit for establishing that meeting. And one of the things that we noted was that Baton Rouge has a city arborist. And so Jimmy Couvion, we asked him to explore that, to explore and see if that's something that the city of Shreveport might need to do in the future, is to actually have an arborist. So, and as soon as our, as soon as the onslaught stopped with me, the first person I called was Annie Mills. I said, "It's my understanding it's coming to your neighborhood, get on the front end of this because it's not pretty."
Yeah. And she was, I could tell Annie was nervous, but it went well. So, we appreciate you reaching out and be happy to, like I say, share any kind of discussions that went on that day that might be helpful for your upcoming...
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Broussard. Any other council members have any guests or awards to present? If not, Mayor Tyler?
Nothing today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any reports? We have Mr. Green here. Any property standards, inquiries, questions, comments? There's none at this time, Mr. Green.
Well, hold on. Just had a quick question. I think it's a demolition, and I know y'all are monitoring it, but I just didn't know the status, and I don't need to know immediately, but it's that building on Southern near where it intersects Fairfield, kind of overlooks the interstate. It had a wall collapse in December or so. I think a one-story brick building had a...
That's right by the train tracks?
Right by the train tracks, yeah.
Contractor has it right now. As a matter of fact, he's disassembling it by brick by brick.
Okay. Got it. So it's just, so they're in process of doing it and they're actively working on it. I saw it looked like it had been maybe sort of roped off a little bit and posted, and so it looked like something was happening, but I just wanted to make sure that didn't sit like that for five years or anything. Do we have him on a timeframe?
We'll put him on one.
Great.
And he's trying to save the Chicago bricks, but...
I mean, they're good-looking bricks. I understand why.
We'll tell him to go ahead and...
I wish he would have saved the building, but, you know, at least the bricks are all right. But, yeah, I mean, you know, there's, if he's, you know, if that's his primary goal and that's what's taking it longer, I mean, there are certainly reclamation yards in town of people, I mean, those bricks are worth money. Somebody will come and pay him to take it apart, you know? Like, so, you know, if we could talk to him about just getting it on a timely method, I'd rather do that than let it linger for too long.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Terrence, a quick question for you. This is something that's sitting there, and I've never understood if it's a city problem or if it's property standard. The drugstore on the corner of Yuri and Piermont. I think a car ran into the side of the wall, and there is a caved-in, you can imagine the street corner, and then they've got an elevated parking area, and in that parking lot, there's like a flower bed. And I think either it's a bus or a car drove into that thing. And, I mean, it happened two years ago, three years ago, and it's crumbling. Now, I'm assuming property standards is who deals with it, but I don't know the answer. Brian, you know, do you know what I'm talking, in that CVS, right in...
I've got Walgreens.
It's a Wal, it might be a Walgreens.
It's Walgreens, and at the front...
And I've always wondered, like, is somebody going to repair that ultimately, and does anybody have any responsibility or...
I bet that's one, just guessing, when I see something like that that lingers a long time, that looks like it was the result of an accident, I always think there must be a lawsuit pending on it or an insurance claim that's preventing it from getting done.
But, I mean, it just made me think of it, like...
But it's been there a long time.
I drive by it every day.
And I'm like, anybody going to fix this deal?
Is that Walgreens? That's Walgreens.
What exactly is it?
But I don't want to make, I'm not criticizing the business owner, I'm just not sure whose response...
It's Walgreens right there on the corner.
You can't, I mean, if you're at the corner, and particularly if you're going Yuri North, and you look to the left, you can't miss it, it's right on the corner.
We'll check it out.
And, I mean, it's two years at least.
I bet you there's a lawsuit on that.
I mean, they're probably, and I just, you know, before somebody, it just occurred to me when you said the building's slowly being, this one's falling in if we don't do anything about it. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other inquiries for Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll visit with you later. That's the plan committee report. Mr. Sweeney, you'll be prepared. Brian? Sweeney, let me ask you a question if you don't mind. I trust all the councilmen have set up appointments with you.
Well, yes, we're still coordinating with some of them to get everything coordinated, but yes, we've made a lot of appointments.
My question is, at your meetings, the MPC meeting especially, I was at the previous sitting in on one last week, and there was an item on the agenda outside of the appeals and the applications. Do your meetings allow public comments when there are items like that?
Especially if it's under the public hearing section, yes, sir, there is. Yes, you can have any comments that applicants come forward or the citizens have a comment, yes, they can.
Not on, not regarding the application, but on the items that are not...
Items that are not public hearing items, we typically don't take comments of those items.
You do not?
Mm-mm. Now, if the chair wishes to do so, he or she has the right to open it up for that purpose. But typically, those are items that are just normal business items that don't require any type of public input.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question. As we move forward, we don't have any public hearing today. Add an item to the agenda, Mr. Crawford.
We do have one item to add to the agenda, Mr. Chairman. This is going to be a resolution, accepting a donation from Willis Knighten Health Systems and otherwise provided with respect thereto. This accepts a donation of $50,000 from Willis Knighten to improve the Andrew Curry Communication, or Community Center, in the roofing and the substructure thereunder.
I don't know, we want to accept that. What do you think, Councilman Crawford? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's one other. It's Resolution 18A, which will replace Resolution, 108A, which will replace Resolution 108. And it concerns authorizing the renewal and collection of the 1/4% sales and use tax. This is just one to replace.
Okay. Any questions regarding the adding of the legislation?
Well, what's the difference with 108A?
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out, is there an amendment or something to this one, because I'm not...
Yes, this one says, "A resolution to amend Resolution 69, which was already adopted, as opposed to..."
Okay.
There was, there was some wording saying this...
Okay. Date changes to it. Okay. All right. Gotcha.
Okay. The attorney was saying something.
There were date changes. We had gotten some communication from the State Bond Commission, and there was, we made the changes that were listed for them, that they stated that they needed for the resolution to have. And it would need to be voted on so that we can send it back to them for completion and be on their upcoming agenda.
That's the original resolution. We're familiar with that. We weren't familiar with the amendment to 108.
To amend rather than repeal, like that word.
Now we're clear. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
All right. Okay. We all clear?
I think so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Let me get back to my place here. To adopt ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 104 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances on Sunday, June the 4th, 2016, during the Cross Lake Flotilla located at 5301 South Lakeshore Drive. Resolution 105 recognizes the iconic career and accomplishments of Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs and to dedicate the 4,100 block of Hollywood Avenue in honor of his extraordinary life. Resolution 106 authorizes Lucient Fields Estates located at 9551 Wallace Lake Road to connect to the water and sewer systems of the city of Shreveport. And then Resolution 107 rejects bids received on IFB 16-008 Stoner Avenue Dog Park Construction Project.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding these resolutions? Councilman Jenkins?
Okay. Not that I am particularly motivated to spend a lot of time on the Dog Park, but that being said, the rejection is a function of pricing, or are we possibly looking at a different location due to flooding and what have you?
The original rejection was based on the bid itself, so it's specific to the location and pricing. It was $635,000 when there was a $280,000 budget.
Okay.
Shelley can probably add to that.
If that's the answer, that's...
Yeah, it's pricing.
That's the answer, yeah.
Price only.
Yeah, they're just rejecting the bids so they can seek more, my understanding is they've made some modifications to the request proposal that make it more clear as to what they're looking for that would anticipate a better response from contractors.
Something that's more in line with what we do have available to spend.
Correct.
Let me ask you, Mayor, in consideration of what Councilman just mentioned, because I mean, I know at least three or four times since it's been on the agenda, I mean, on the table, we've had flooding in there, is there, is there any concern about the location at this point?
Well, Ms. Regal, please come on up. There should be.
I was going to say, if she says, "No, there are no concerns," I'll be...
There should be, you know, and so that may be something for a discussion.
We did talk about the location when we met with our architect and design team, as well as the Dog Park Alliance. You have to remember that that money is tied to the River Waterway Commission, so any movement from the riverfront would cause a loss in funding. So, we are going to try to make what, you know, Hamels is worse, worse location, so we believe this is the best location on the riverfront for the Dog Park, and that will enable us to keep the funding for the Waterway Commission.
Dog Park is better than the zoo that they were talking about putting there.
Aquatic animals, yeah.
We don't want to lose the funding, I know that, so we'll just be patient, see what happens. Okay. All right, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir. Regular general legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 98 amends Resolution Number 44 of 2016, authorizing the use of certain equipment by North Shreveport Business Association. This is for their crawfish pool that raises money for law enforcement in the area. Resolution 99 and Resolution 100 are companions, as well as ordinance 45 that we'll read later in this meeting. Resolution 99 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Archon Information Systems LLC and the parish of Caddo. Resolution 100 authorizes the mayor to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the parish of Caddo relative to the sales of adjudicated property. Resolution 101 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Cook, Yancey, King and Galloway APLC. Resolution 102 authorizes the acceptance of a donation of $15,000 from Capital One Bank. Resolution 103 authorizes the mayor to execute a multi-party agreement on behalf of the city to provide Bentley Steel Tube Manufacturing Corporation for infrastructure expenses. This is a $1.981 million refund to the city for work that we've already done. Resolution 108 amends Resolution Number 69 of 2016, ordering and calling a special election in November 2016 to be held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal and collection of the 1/4% sales and use tax therein, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith.
Any questions regarding these resolutions? Councilman Everson?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention briefly, just wanted to ask for everybody's support on 99 and 100. Those are the ones concerning the online auction of the adjudicated property. That's something, you know, I have a lot of adjudicated property in my district, and I know there are two of us here, and Stephanie as well, that also have that as a significant concern in their districts. So I wanted to give a little bit of a closer look as to how that was going to function and what the, how that might actually work. And so I contacted some of the guys from the parish who had been working on it, got the information for the, for the guy that is running this system, and had a chance to call him and ask a bunch of questions. I was very satisfied with the answers, and I was very encouraged with some of the results that they've had in other communities. I think this is definitely something that we want to support, we want to try it, and, you know, it may or may not be the perfect approach for us, but it is certainly one worth trying and worth giving a shot because this is something that not only could, you know, get these properties off the list of those properties that the city has to pay to maintain and cut grass on and do all that work on, not only could it do that, not only could it also, you know, get this property back into the hands of somebody who may pay taxes on it, but the great thing about it is that this system allows it to get out there with clear title on it. And that's always been the challenge, is that when you get the programs that we have, while people can get clear title, it's a difficult process for them, you know? You kind of have to be somebody who's used to it or been around that world a little while, but you're, you know, kind of typical smaller-scale investor, might be intimidated by the process that it takes in order to get clear title on some of these properties, preventing them from moving forward with an investment. This, however, does a lot to, you know, sort of have an insurable title that they can then get financing, they can mortgage the property, you know, they can, they can actually get some funding in place to do improvements to it, which is exactly what we're hoping to see. So I was pleased with what I've seen so far, and this is the next step that we need to take to move forward with it, and I certainly would ask you all to support it.
I have to interrupt everything you said. I think Councilman Jenkins said, you say you want some of your district?
Just tell me, I can get one.
We were trying to negotiate some property swap between our district and sales purchases.
Y'all start to ball rolling, we'll turn in.
Target.
By introductions of...
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to...
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, on another subject. Could we talk about Resolution 103 a minute? I feel like, you know, I've read it, but I just would love a little bit more of a sense of what was already in place and if this is, you know, it sounds like this is sort of a, you know, sort of a continuation of something that was already in place or...
Well, there was a, there was a project to review a lift station located along Highway 1 near the port. Part of that agreement was that the port would offer certain amounts of money, the city would offer certain money, the state would offer certain money. That money would be escrowed, project would be completed, and then at what point, what escrowed money was due back to the city would then be returned to the city. The CEA provides for the documentation to the state that that project has been completed now, and that the escrowed money, I think it's one point, a little over $1.9 million, should be returned back to the city.
Got it. Thank you.
And by the way, the $29 million comes from the state initially?
That's correct.
So that was an economic incentive?
Correct.
From the state?
To entice Bentley Steel.
To entice Bentley Steel?
That's correct.
And then our part of that enticement, and there really wasn't, we just kind of paid for this money, and then once the project was completed, we'd get it back.
Right. Correct.
Are we...
And let me just...
Is there any delta between, from an economic standpoint, purely numbers in regard to the Bentley Steel, or did we spend or expense any money in the efforts to attract the Bentley Steel from the City of Shreveport?
Are you saying outside of this agreement and a separate economic effort?
Apparently in this case, we're revenue neutral on it, right?
Right.
We loaned the money and we're getting it back, I mean, sort of like that, but is there anything where we... Does anybody know?
Not that I'm aware of. Unless there was some type of water rate agreement?
Because that was prior to this administration.
That would be, yeah, no, but the water rate thing would be between probably the port and us anyways, because the port owns the...
That's correct.
The water rate agreement was, was a part of the corporate endeavor agreement. We give them inside-city rates, just like most of the industries at the port that have requested it prior to coming to the port as an economic development incentive. The city has some money in the, and I don't have the exact amount, how much we spent on the lift station. The entire project was over $1.9 million, but not significantly. We needed to upgrade the lift, that lift station anyway. Those pumps have been in place since 1995, so it, we were able to get a good upgrade and not pay that much for it.
And on those water, city water rates into the port, so on that, since it's port infrastructure, right? We use that revenue to then pay off the ports?
Ninety percent of the revenue goes back to the port to pay off the loan for the infrastructure.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me just ask a question going to Councilman Everson. When did we finish the lift station?
The lift station was just completed within the last few weeks. It's just been completed.
Okay. And, and we got the call that says, you know, we have this money that you're supposed to recoup, because we didn't have any, I didn't know that we needed to do that, but I did get the call. And we said, tell us what we need to do to get the money back, so we can get it back into Water and Sewer Department. And then we were told then the process for getting the funds, but we could not apply for the funds, as I, as I can appreciate it, until the lift station was completed.
And so those returned funds would go back into capital budgets for water sewer?
Where they were expended from.
And is that in a, in a, like a particular project line, or it's just in...
In the capital, it, it goes back to the port project.
Port project, got it. Thank you.
Very good discussion, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we may continue.
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to June 14th, 2016. Resolution 109 authorizes the mayor to accept an application with the U.S. Department of Justice for JAG grant funding. This provides $120,424 both to SPD and Cattle Parish Sheriff's Office. SPD's portion will be used to purchase police boats. They also get 52.5% of this funding, or $63,000. Resolution 110 selects the time as the official journal for the City of Shreveport for the period commencing July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Any discussion on these resolutions?
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to June 14th, 2016. Ordinance 54 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. This provides $900,000 on a new project for the extension of taxi weight in downtown airport. $810,000 of that funding comes from the FAA, and $90,000 of that comes from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Aviation Administration. Ordinance 55 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. This is $36 million worth of consent degree Phase 1 projects. Ordinance 56 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. This is $1.9 million for part of the mayor's 2016 street improvement plan for Burke Coons, I'm sorry, for Linwood from Burke Coons to Mount Zion Road. Ordinance 57 amends and reenacts Chapter 26-109 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the fee schedule for the Department of Engineering and Environmental Services and to enact Division 6 of Article 2 and Chapter 78 relative to facility permits and facility servitudes. Ordinance 59 is a zoning case number C-4-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of West 70th Street and Rice Road. Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana being the same as hereby changed from R.A.S.P.I.-2 Resident Agriculture Industrial Park Overlay District to B3-E.S.P.I.-2 Community Business Extended Use Industrial Park Overlay District with site plan approval.
Now, you did say 58 or 59, I thought I heard you say...
I'm sorry, ordinance 58. I misspoke.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Just one quickly, and I am looking at the Linwood project. In the notes, put the link, it says in Program C Streets Improvements, that would be on the page of the whereas page. It says fund $1.9 million from 2014 GOB funds for proposition. So when we're saying that's really the 2011 GOB that of which we, when we sold them in 2014, is that where we're...
And those were funds that were originally allocated for the Murphy Street Bridge project that we had in holding, that are being applied toward that new Linwood project.
And it was really my question about 2014?
You're correct.
It is the 2011 GOB, but it was sold 2014.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And because we were able to get the state to do the Murphy Street Bridge, we were able now to take that, those dollars and put them on Linwood to help, absolutely help us with that Linwood. It's terrible out there.
Thank you all for being so lenient. Ms. Crawford?
Ordinances on second reading and final passages. Ordinance 37 amends and reenacts Article 1 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances relative to animals and fowl. Ordinance Number 40 authorizes the mayor to lease America Real Estate Company certain properties located in the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 41 and 42 are co-amendments. Amendment 41 amends the 2016 capital improvement budget. This is $54,000 for the airport, from the, for the capital project to accept those being dedicated in 42 from the airport operating budget for the Automated Surface Observation System. 42 is the enterprise fund budget portion of the 2016 Air Force Enterprise Fund in donating those $54,000 to the capital fund of ordinance 41. Ordinance 43, an ordinance for the correction of ordinance Number 27 of 2016 declaring the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments heritage place. Believe it or not, a lot number is just being re-designated in the correct order. Ordinance 44 amends a part of ordinance Number 140, 1983, and 157 of 1975 to change Section 1 of these ordinances from two-way stop intersections to four-way stop intersections. Ordinance 45 amends and reenacts Chapter 26 of Article 8, Division 2 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the disposal of adjudicated properties, and this is the companion to Resolution 99 and Resolution 100 that were spoke of earlier. Resolu-, uh, ordinance 47 is a zoning case C-20-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the east side of North Market approximately 200 feet north of Lincoln Drive, Shreveport. Cattle Parish, LA being the same as hereby changed from R1D Urban One Family Residential District to B3 Community Business District with site plan approval. Ordinance 48 is zoning case Number C-22-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the west side of Yuri Drive, 275 feet north of Anniston Avenue, Shreveport. Cattle Parish, Louisiana being the same as hereby changed from B1S.P.I.-3 Buffer Business Commercial Corridor Overlay Business to B1-E.S.P.I.-3 Buffer Business Extended Use Commercial Corridor Overlay District Limited to Indoor Amusement Center with site plan approval. Ordinance 49 is also a zoning case Number C-23-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Kings Highway and Holly Street approximately 120 feet south of Kings Highway. Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana being the same as hereby changed from R2 Suburban Multi-Family Residential District to B2 Neighborhood Business District with site plan approval. Zoning 50 is also a zone, ordinance 50 is also a zoning case Number C-24-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the west side of Norris Ferry Road, 230 feet south of Southern Loop. Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana being the same as hereby changed from B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B2 Neighborhood Business District with site plan approval. This is for a private school. Ordinance 51 is Case Number C-28-16, an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to site plan approval requirements. This will empower the MPC's Executive Director to administer approval of all site plans. Ordinance 52 is Case Number C-29-16, an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to group homes, where group homes would not be allowed to locate closer to 1,000 feet from any pre-existing group home.
Okay. I trust everybody has had a chance to review these, this is, so there are time actually here to many questions regarding these ordinances. We should be prepared to deal with these tomorrow. All right, Mr. Crawford?
I don't know of any table legislation that's coming off, so now we're down to property standards appeals.
Just one.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, I knew there was a question on something, I couldn't remember what. I did not actually see the Cattle Commission meeting, but I understand they did pass an animal ordinance. Is the, are we ready to move on that now, or is there any adjustment we need to make based on what they passed or anything like that? I didn't know if they passed it straight as it was written there, or if they made any modifications.
I believe we are ready to proceed, Mr. Councilman.
What's that?
We are ready to proceed, or, Councilman. We are ready to proceed.
We are, we're ready to proceed.
Green light. The green light means go. Happy to hear it. Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I know when we're trying to coordinate with another government body, sometimes they make a change, we don't, whatever, can get confusing, but thanks. Let's get rid of it.
Mr. Green, do me one second, okay?
One second.
I would like to hear public comment regarding Resolution 97 from Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward, sir. You have, you want to make some remarks? Please state the name and address.
James Williams, 8613.
Put the mic down a little bit, okay?
James Williams, 8613 West Wellness Way, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106.
Okay. We're going to be taking up your appeal today, and I was going to give you an opportunity to make any remarks that you wanted to make, sir.
I don't know what decision you have decided to make, but I'd like for you to know that the material that was on the lot at 153 E 73rd has not gone to the dump. I can prove it. If you remember, the first day that I was here, I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe somebody asked me how, in, in some respect as to how could I verify or prove that I didn't, or the stuff was moved. I don't remember the exact words, but the stuff, over half of it, you remember, I told you that, at the first day I was here, I told you that I had moved half of it, approximately half of the things that was on it, and, and it's still that way. The contractor, number one, as far as I know, never came out to see what was there, what was moved. He had pictures. I'm assuming that he went by pictures. As far as the pictures were concerned, had I known that you had pictures, I wouldn't have volunteered to give $1,000 to move the, the material off of my lot. I would have, but after I saw the pictures, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't agree to give $1,000, because over half of the material has not been carried to the dump. I can prove it. So, this is something that I didn't want to say, but if I, since I had to say it, then I will say it. It has not been. I've, I've told you about the person that owned the, the stuff that owns the lot. I've discussed that with you. I told you her educational level and so forth. I told you about her. I went by Friday, I needed a bicycle wheel. I went by Friday to purchase a bicycle wheel. She wouldn't sell it to me.
Mr. Chairman?
So Williams, your time has expired. I appreciate you coming down. We're going to move forward with the property standards with appeals, okay? We're going to make a determination on your situation as we move forward. Sir?
This is, these are, these are some of the things that I think you would, I would like for you to consider when you make the decision.
Well, we, we have, we have all a pretty good detailed strip and, and information that was provided to us with your situation. It's been, it's been lingering since, I think it was November, so we're, we're pretty clear on what transpired. And there was some additional information that we got last time, but we discussed it. So we, we are, we are prepared, I think, to move forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, what, what is the decision, what decision?
Well, we haven't made it yet. We will make it in this process.
Will you make it today?
We will make it today. We will make it today. But we have other, we have, we have the Director of our Property Standards prepared to present other cases to us, and then we'll eventually get to your case, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Our first case is 530 LaSalle Street. This is one that has been back and forth. The owner has not done anything to the property, and this also goes in with property next door, which is 526.
This is the guy who takes out his stuff and then puts it on the road for us to pick it up.
Right. This is the guy that I've been in communication with, he hasn't done anything since our last inquiry.
No, sir.
Okay, I'm not going to give him any, any other extension.
Our next case is...
Do we need to vote on anything or not?
I move that, I move that we will...
For both properties?
I'm sorry? No, my, 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 is that we will not give him another postponement, and that we will proceed with the, with the rules of the property standards as relates to hold him accountable for his property.
I'll second that, Mr. Green.
Moving second, that no other postponement will be given, this, this property, that proceed with the necessary process of having that property sustained.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, vote aye.
Chairman, is that for both properties?
That's for both properties. We were dealing with them both concurrently, so we, my motion is for both addresses.
The vote is 5-0 to proceed.
Thank you. The vote is 5-0. Next, next case.
Our next case is 2825 Jones Mayberry Road. Owner has done most of the demolition.
Okay.
Uh, what they wish to do is to come in, sign an affidavit, and allow us to come in and do the cleanup, and they will set up payment.
And you have an estimate of what it's going to cost us to do that?
We'll get...
I mean, owner would know before they sign the affidavit.
Right, we'll, we'll have several contractors.
I move that we would get this owner privilege of signing affidavit to have this debris held off by the city, and that they will work out a payment plan to be reimbursed by the, by the, by the person.
The motion is to proceed, and they've indicated that the owner agrees to this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Can I get a second?
I'd like to discuss it a little bit, and I, I don't mean that I don't support it. Why aren't they just doing it themselves?
They, they tore it down themselves. They, they don't have the apparatus to hold it away themselves.
But it's going to be more expensive if they got to go through us to do it.
Well, according to the owner, they're spending $250 plus labor costs per load, and whereas they can have... and whereas they can have the city do it, set up a payment plan, and it's cheaper, they're on, they're an elderly couple, and they're on a fixed income.
So, the fact that it's, they're able to pay it over time makes it more appealing to them.
Right.
Okay. Okay, guys, I would, I mean, enterprising, two fifty a load.
Well, I mean, it sounds somewhat, you know, unreasonable for them to do that, but I think since they don't have the funds available to do it, yeah, I think.
No, I just feel bad for them that they hadn't found somebody to get them a bit better than two fifty a load, that seems high to me, but it's not my business, but...
But you've discussed this with them, and they're clear of what this process means.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, the original motion, I mean, the original action was to request a demolition, right? This is to complete the demolition?
The demolition is complete, uh, this is now, would be considered a care of premise cleanup.
Okay.
Do you need a second for your...
I need a second.
I'll second him.
Counselman Jenkins, any discussion, further discussion? If not, please vote.
Vote is five two to...
Vote is five zero to out of the chamber. Thank you. You may proceed.
Our next case is twenty-seven forty-nine Barrett Street. The owner has asked for thirty days, uh, he has presented a doctor's excuse weight, he fell off of a structure of some sort and broke his arm.
He fell off the house?
Not, not that one.
Okay.
No, but, uh, I, I do have the, the bill if you would like to see it, uh, but...
He's asking for thirty days, for what purpose?
So that he can do the demolition.
Because he got delayed with his injury.
He got a broken arm, so he can't do the demo.
So, uh, I spoke with Terrence, and we talked about this, and, um, we're going to go ahead and move for the thirty-day extension, but this will be the last extension, let them try, um...
Is there provision for him to stay off other risks until...
Well, what, what I said is, uh, you know, a broken arm certainly may prevent you from doing some work, but calling your contractor is pretty easily done even with a broken arm, so, uh, I hope he can still get it done.
All right. Okay, all right, uh, I second the motion, you, you move, right?
Correct.
Move by Counselman Jefferson, seconded by the chair for the thirty-day extension. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, vote, please vote.
Pass to this chairman.
Five, two out of the chambers, motion passes. Next, next case.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. At this time...
One, one other case was added to the agenda, that's Mr. Williams.
Who?
Mr. Williams, James Williams, you don't have him.
I didn't have him as added to the...
Well, Mr. Clark, let me handle it this way, if you please. The council on, on last, uh, meeting, uh, gave Mr. Williams, uh, an opportunity to, gave, to come back before us as we hurry this appeal, and we wanted to bring closure to this, and we are bringing that up now in regards to Mr. Williams' fine or fee regarding, uh, the property at one fifty-three E seventy-third street. And I hope everybody has given this some, some thought and some consideration, as Mr. Williams has been before us, and he felt like he was not being, I mean, his, his part of the property was not being, uh, considered, his, his work in it. I misunderstood, I want to apologize to Counselman, uh, Jenkins, for my misunderstanding, it was a communication issue, just a misunderstanding of the process and the chronicle of what transpired with this gentleman and with his property. Saying all that, I want to make a motion that Mr. Williams', uh, fee for the work that was provided would be twelve hundred fifty dollars. One thousand twenty-five dollars. That's my motion.
I second.
Seconded by Counselman...
Who seconded the motion?
Counselman Florrie seconded my motion, that Mr. Williams' fee would be set at twelve fifty. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for the record to show that I, along with another councilman, contributed some funds to Fannie Mae at the time this came up, the original time. Matter of fact, I went home, my wife won't know where my fifty dollars was, and I told her I gave it to Fannie Mae.
Annie Mae.
Thank you. Huh? Well, I told her Fannie Mae, that must be the reason I got in trouble. Anyway, what I'm saying is, we did contribute some money trying to help resolve this issue, and so I think the twelve fifty is right in line, uh, to what we should settle on, and so, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for that, and thank you for your contribution, Miss Annie Mae, but I want to, again, just say that, uh, and, you know, and, and I don't know, we're not a courtroom, Mr. Williams said that he wanted justice out of this body. I just want this body to be consistent in what we do, uh, and we can't look at where it's coming from, the consistency fairness, the equity coming from, and that's why I said earlier once, that we may need to have an idea of what, uh, we're engaging when we, uh, allow others to use our resources, because we, we could, we could weigh the fee at the convention, at the convention center parking, and that may be one amount, and we can do this, let certain materials and equipment be utilized for other events, like we're going to do for some groups, uh, that's on the agenda now, that may be another amount, but I think we also need to consider, uh, when we start doing things for our citizens, how we are consistent in allowing us to be equitable and fair, and I just thought that that was, and looking at the merits of what happened with this incident, and with this site, with this Annie Mae and with Mr. Williams, that I, I just want to make, that's what I think we all would consider, fair and just, and that's why I offered that motion, and I trust you that you all will vote in, in, in affirmative, so that we can at least bring closure and allow Mr. Williams to move forward, and I'm sure he would pay his, uh, pay his fee to, for what occurred on his property. There's no other discussions, please vote. Motion passes five zero, two outs. Thank you, thank you, council members, I appreciate you very much. Okay, as we move forward, uh, on the agenda, there's, what's from any committees, boards, officers? Counselman.
I'll just say, um, that for those who attended the last, um, the last before committee meeting, you'll recall, we asked the group that was assigned to make recommendations regarding civic corporations funding, to meet, review those applications, and make their recommendations, and I want to thank, um, everybody who participated in that committee, because they got together very quickly, they reviewed all of the applications, and they have, on Friday, I received their recommendations, so we'll be calling, uh, another before committee meeting soon to discuss this and move forward.
Great, thank you for your work. Any other officers, council members have any other reports? If not, we'll move forward to the clerk's report, clerk.
Uh, two things, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
We received an appeal of case number VAC thirty-four sixteen, Union Investment LLC, request for packaged liquor and wine sales at seventy-eight fifty Lindwood Avenue, and we intend to set that one for the next meeting. That has been appealed, so we intend to set that appeal for the next meeting. The other is, immediately after this meeting, there is a special meeting that's been called by the chairman, uh, to consider the alcohol permit at H and H Corner Store doing business as Pingus Corner Store.
We will be proceeding with that immediately after the adjournment of this meeting, uh, and if those parties are here...
I believe, I believe that meeting's been postponed, I'm going to have to...
You have to call it up.
Okay.
All right. We will consider that. We've got the additional communications, Madam Mayor?
Nothing, thank you.
Any council members? I do have a couple of questions, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, let me first thank you for, uh, for your response regarding, uh, the recent violence shootings, thought you made a good initial statement, and then consequently you made some other statements, and I appreciate that, I think some of the anxieties of the community has somewhat subsided. I've attended a couple of meetings this week, one particular was last Monday, I think Counselman Florrie attended it also. It wasn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a positive meeting, but it was a meeting, uh, that exposed some things, and I just wanted to ask you, Mayor, what is your policy in regards to city employees speaking directly with city council members?
Um, if you, if they live within your district, uh, as a constituent, they can talk to you. I mean, I mean, you know, everybody has that opportunity, but, uh, if you have grievance, and it's, um, you know, in the workplace, we ask them to first, let's follow the policy within, that we have established for grievances, and give us an opportunity to get those resolved.
So, grievances, uh...
Should follow, we, we have policies in place...
Deal with grievances.
Yes, sir, to deal with grievances, that's, I mean, otherwise, you don't give the administration an opportunity to get any resolution. If, if every grievance would come to you, you spend all your time doing grievances, probably.
No, not me, because I, I...
Well, you know.
I, I understand protocol, I, I, I'm not responsible for any employees, but at the same time, I, I would, I'd like to see positive working environments, I'd like to see working environments to where people are in harmony with their co, coworkers, and that they're in their supervision, and that they are, to the best part, happy, you know, everybody is going to be happy, but at least...
Everybody's not going to be happy.
But you do have, you yourself have an open to a policy regarding city employees.
Absolutely, we, we sat down, we sit down, you know, look every week with somebody to make sure that we are giving them the opportunity to, um, talk to us about what they feel need to happen or did not happen, so we talk to them all the time, we met last week with several groups, just to make sure that they knew that we were very, we were very sensitive, and that we, we, we want to know what we can do to help, uh, make the workplace a good place for them to be, and to also provide services, and I'll, I'll say to you what I said to, um, you know, some of the employees, and then to some media, uh, you know, this is a different administration, we hold people accountable, and when you try to change that culture, sometimes you get resistance, uh, and, and, you know, because I am a different kind of leader, we are going to expect people to do their jobs. Um, we also expect our administrator, our administration and our managers to treat people with respect and dignity, and so those are the kinds of things that we've been trying to instill in the organization, but we're going to hold people accountable, I hold myself accountable from my desk all the way down, and so when you do make those kind of changes, sometimes you do get resistance.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate those remarks, I thought that was very, very strong and precise, and that's the type of management I love to be a part of, but, uh, and I know, and, and I have no intentions or no desire to interfere with, with the management style that you have, it's just unfortunate that, for whatever reason, we have employees that think that they can come to the city council and we can somehow create policy on how you deal with your people, that's not, that's not the way it works.
I know.
But I...
And we listen to them, I, I promise you, we do.
But, I, I know you do, I, I feel comfortable that you do, and I just, I'm just asking that, as best you can, we could try to eliminate some of the negativity that, that, that we hear sometimes, I don't want to deal with it, but I, I don't like to see it, I, I think we can create a very positive working, working environment, we need, we need to do that.
And, you know, if we had a little more money too, Mr. Chairman, to give them all raises, but, you know, you know, we have the recurring money...
That'd be a penalty, huh?
Well, that's, that's probably about seventy percent of what you're hearing.
Something, right.
Right, right, and, and, you know, we, we just don't have the funds, we're like six hundred thousand dollars down on our revenues the first quarter.
Already?
Already, and so, when the money is not there, as a seasoned CEO, I can tell you, you don't bankrupt the city, and you don't lay off people and create, you know, harm to those families, but we work toward trying to find solutions so that we can address all employees with a raise, the money is just isn't there, and it's not coming in right now.
Well, you did what you could, Mayor, I mean, to bring, the, was the minimum wage of Freeport is ten dollars?
Yes, for the city, for the, for the, for the city employees, yes, every city employee now, and we were able to find enough monies because we did do some, some trimming, uh, and trying to find some efficiencies, we were able to reduce, as you know, four point two million last year in our budget, and, uh, we were able to find a way to give those who are the lowest paid, some of the hardest working employees, who were making eight dollars and sixty cent an hour, ten dollars an hour, and, and, you know, that created some problems, but I thought it was the right thing to do, and I made that call.
It was an excellent thing to do, but again, and, and I'm closed by this, because Mr. Florrie and I were sort of, uh, I was going to say cornered, but weren't actually cornered, because, you know, we, nobody cornered us together, we're like linebackers, but, but to, to accuse us of not being sensitive to employees when they tell us that they hadn't gotten a raise in ten years, and you, and we've only been in office for fifteen months, sort of disingenuous, you know, so I started counting back.
The term raise, I, I don't, it's befuddling to anybody that uses that term, I, I don't understand why that isn't construed a raise, but I don't understand that.
No, anyway, thank you, Mayor, for your, for your response.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what you did.
And, you know, we've been here the same length of time, and we got accused of not giving them raises for ten years too, so, just know that you're not in any doubt by yourself.
Sixteen months, Halla? Yes, sir.
Mayor, darling. Please, uh, correct me if I misspoke this week, I was at Comcast, and I was explaining the reporter concern.
Yes, sir.
And I shared with them that the tracking number automatically comes back, and once that job is completed, that you get an email back saying your job has been closed and completed. What I said was that you, you check those, or you, your people check and follow up on where they're at on those tracking numbers. Audit of them once a week, twice a week, to see how good, how many of them are being closed, is that a good statement?
Uh, and are we talking about projects?
Yeah, just tracking numbers that come in on people's concern, they fill out, and then you get a tracking number, and then as soon as they complete it, they send you a, saying your tracking number so-and-so has been completed and closed.
I think for most departments, we have that system, some departments may not have it, but we, we do have people that we, we're pushing to make sure that they at least let people know when we have...
Closed them.
Closed them, and, and, you know, keep in mind, we probably get five hundred different, um, complaints a week, actually, to do something, I get it, we get everybody's list, and you, and we get your list too, and so just know that, that, uh, once you get your list, uh, then we have hundreds of other people out there who send us a list, and we try to put those in, in, in priority, um, order, and, um, we try to address those emergencies first, and then we look at how we can get to all the others, but it's ongoing, and that's what service is all about, but that, you know, they have to give us an opportunity, and when people don't follow up, and I'll say to you that sometimes our folks don't always follow up like they should, when they let us know that, we get right on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other council members have any... Any other council members have any, uh, communications they want to express at this time? Not? Meeting is adjourned.